of the Subcommittee on Equity, Inclusion and Diversity of the Everett School Committee. It's Tuesday, October 20th, and we're gonna go ahead and get started. Very excited to be hosting and chairing this first ever Subcommittee meeting. As you might know, this Subcommittee was recently approved by my colleagues and I, and we're very excited to be launching this first meeting. We have special guests this evening, but before we start it, let's go for a roll call. Addie, please.
Mr. Barrows.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Three members present, we do have a call room, we are live on Facebook, and we do have guests with us, the members of the administration are present here with us, leaders of Everett High School, but let's go to the agenda and we can hear from all of them. The first item of the agenda, it's a presentation of our voice, our choice, leaders of tomorrow. And I'll pass now on to Ms. Lambert, who brought this agenda item. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you so much, and thank you to the student leaders and alumni. We had the pleasure over the summer of working with student leaders, some of whom are alumni, some are present, so if you'd just like to take a moment to introduce yourselves and then present, I don't know if you have a version you'd like to give to us, but part of what we're doing with the Subcommittee is looking at policies as it pertains to equity, inclusion and diversity, which is much of what we've spoken about this summer, and we're ready to get to work. So I don't know if you wanna go around and introduce yourselves, and then you're welcome to present.
All right, who's gonna be the first one? Lori?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure, just make sure you guys can hear me. So over the summer, we had the opportunity to meet with several student leaders and alumni, and so if you could introduce yourselves, and then you're welcome to present, because as the Subcommittee for Equity, Inclusion and Diversity for Everett Public Schools, we're ready to get to work on a lot of the policies and much of what we started for the summer.
Hi, my name is Ann Marie Pierre, and I am now a senior. I'm also a part of the Leaders of Tomorrow group, organization, and Melissa?
Hi, my name is Melissa Seane, I'm a senior at Everett High. I'm also a part of Leaders of Tomorrow. Me and Lori are also a part of UYBE, we're on the UY Empowering Young Black Excellence Club that works to uplift the young black community at Everett High and also bring BIPOC solidarity. So we're really looking towards putting in policies that make sure that everybody gets their voice heard and justice is served to everybody. Melissa?
Hi, my name's Melissa, I'm a first year at Wellesley College. I graduated from Everett High last year. I'm also a part of the Group Leaders of Tomorrow. It just started off with like a group of friends that we were talking about, like social issues that we saw in Everett High, and a lot of us were super involved in extracurriculars, so we just wanted to try and start, spark the change in Everett High's with the political climate going on.
Mercy, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mercy Baschway, and I'm part of the Leader of Tomorrow to bring equity to black, Black Indigenous, POC, and people with disabilities.
Hi, everybody, my name's Rhod Saida, I'm an alumni of Everett High. I graduated in 2020. Basically, what we do as a group is that we kind of wanna bring together, again, kind of bridge the gap between like students and faculty perspectives on some of the issues and things that we face within the school community. Some of the main focuses of what we're talking about over the summer revolved around like cultural and social awareness, and through that, like kind of talking about things such as like faculty diversity, different avenues for professional development for faculty, ways that we could have teacher evaluations and diversifying the curriculum. We also talked about public and private accountability of EPS, and we wanted to kind of talk about what is being done to kind of like show solidarity for Black Indigenous folks of color, and also kind of talking about what we want our school culture to be and what we want to kind of see what our vision for the school is, and like in that, like kind of making sure that like the school kind of holds an anti-racist philosophy as we like move forward. In terms of private accountability, also making sure that there is measures in place for the school district to address kind of things that may happen within the school districts, whether it's like on the basis like culturally or like socially incentive things that may happen, making sure that like things like things are delineated within the student handbooks, the, in the staff handbooks, and also kind of talking about different ways that we can like implement restorative justice practices in situations like this. And we also talked about sexual assault and harassment, and in different ways seeing it like what type of things that we could include within the school community, whether it's things like expanding the RAD program that we currently have in schools, and like talking about, again, like professional development and assemblies that we could have, and also like kind of talking about things like such as the dress code and like reporting systems that would be accessible to students. And again, like we kind of started off with the view that this would come, would go from the high school, but again, we want this to be something that's like seen within the entire Everett Public Schools system, because a lot of this stuff starts in elementary and middle school. But yeah, that's kind of like the short version.
Thank you so much, and so as a body, the school committee, one of our three main functions is creating policy or policy. If you, as students and as alumni, had three priorities, where would you want us to focus? And that's open to anybody.
Yeah, so we definitely think that, again, like in terms of like diversity, again, within school faculty, within the curriculum, and within like, again, reflecting that through like things like such as the, like the student handbook and things like that is really important, and like having that basis there, again, will make students feel more comfortable and like make things more accessible to them in the school. We also think that something else that's really important that should be implemented is whether it's a third-party reporting system or clear line of reporting system for students to kind of be able to have a clear avenue and a clear way to be able to talk about things such as like, kind of like sexual harassment, things that may happen that kind of like are culturally or socially insensitive to them within the school district, that way they, again, there's a clear place that things like that can happen. And also, kind of like talking about, kind of like, again, a lot of the stuff that goes within like the handbook and making sure that those things are kind of like equitable for all students.
Thank you, and anybody on the spot, but I know, so we talked not only for BIPOC, but also the intersection of gender and ability. So I don't know if there's any additional perspective you would like to add. I know Melissa and Mercy, you were great advocates over the summer for those affecting issues, if you're comfortable talking about it.
I can talk a little bit about that, so I think there's enough support for LGBTQ+ students in that, as RAD is a self-defense class made for women, it's sort of difficult for students to either don't identify as female or male students who want to learn self-defense, who wanna talk about rape culture, and sort of, because these topics are super taboo, especially in Everett. So we just wanna make sure that progressing forward with either the self-defense classes and stuff like that, we take into account people who are non-binary or won't feel comfortable in a class of men, or won't feel comfortable in a class of females, if that's what you were asking.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'll ask, if I may, I'd like to add on to that. As a black woman, and I, I don't know, I just feel like we need like a place, everybody needs a place to just be comfortable, and I know like, we don't really know what everybody's going through, but if we create that place for them to just talk about anything and just feel comfortable in a building that they're at, like literally every day, it would be great, and like, everybody would be comfortable, and it would just make the community so much better. That's just what I think.
Thank you.
Lori, can I ask you a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair.
No problem, go ahead.
Lori, when you think about these groups, right, I think that there needs to be space for people of like experiences or backgrounds, cultures, sexuality, all that stuff, right, to share their common experiences. But do you envision that also at least eventually extending to being cross-group too, so that people who don't share someone's experience or background, culture, sexuality, gender, whatever, can hear and learn from the experiences of others? Are you hoping to see both? Do you think we have to start in one place and move to the other? How do you see these things working out?
Um, I think, like, we're, it's not gonna be a thing where we just get it like that. It's gonna be a process, eventually, we're gonna get there, and I feel like we should get there, because we need to learn about our surroundings, our society, and what people are going through as well, but I do see it as both, and I would love for it to like expand beyond that.
Thank you.
Anybody else, before we, I'd love to hear also from the administration, but first, if the students have any, any other recommendation or anything else to add. First, I wanna thank you again, I've been to the meetings with, with you to hear those concerns, those recommendations, things that you went through when you were at EPS, so I wanna thank you again, and just wanna see if there is any, any other recommendation that you'd like to give it to us. This, the goal of this Subcommittee is actually to help the full school committee to implement this change, these recommendations, so we definitely will recommend many of these, these recommendations that you have to the full body, to the full school committee, which I'm sure the superintendent will cover and introduce, also the leadership of Everett High. Some of those recommendations are already in process of being implemented, I believe. So, but before we turn over to the administration, just wanna, as, as we would say, if we were in person, open the floor again to you, to see if there is anything else that you'd like to add.
Can I go?
Please.
I wanted to speak on, in terms of making sure our culture is representative and it's inclusive. I think Leaders of Tomorrow, we briefly talked about how we address issues like this in the media or with other people. I think that if we're really gonna work on bringing inclusivity towards the school and for the student body and for the faculty, that we really need to be active in issuing statements on how we feel or how the school is approaching things, especially for our school, which most of the teachers and almost all of the students are on social media, and that's where they're getting most of their information from. I think whether the school has a collective social media, like accounts or whatever, in the way that they're presenting themselves, they need to make sure that they're active and showing exactly what they feel and what stance they're taking, because it, I think it'll really show our culture in a unified way. If people can see exactly where the Everett High School or Everett Public Schools is standing altogether, I think that'll be really good for us, especially if we're trying to boast a culture of, you know, being inclusive, but that's just what I feel.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
Um, yeah, just kind of like, again, thank you for like having us cut down, being able to come and speak here. I think something else that we really wanna make sure that like, is like that, like student voice is always like included in these conversations, because I think oftentimes, again, there is definitely a gap, and which is why like we kind of wanted to like bring this group together, just making sure that, again, when policies are implemented, that there is student voice and student like thought included in the process, because I think it's really important to make sure that their voices, their opinions are being heard in terms of what decisions are being made about their education.
Absolutely, that's for sure. All right, Ms. Lambert, anything else to add?
No, just my sincerest thanks. I know whether you're a freshman at college, or juniors or seniors at Everett High, it's been a tremendous fall so far, and for you making time to spend with us and representing that student voice, and I hope that we hear more from more students. You know, all of you are very talented, excellent students, and we're so proud of you, and we'll just continue to lift up other voices, so thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
I just wanna say that having you here makes me really proud. I'm a mom of two kids that are in Everett Public Schools right now, and I believe in public education, I've been in public education for almost my whole life, and having you guys here to role model for my kids is really moving and really important. And thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for caring about the kids that you have moved on from, if you're in college, or, you know, that are considerably younger than you and coming up behind you, because, you know, you guys are setting the stage for them, and you're showing them what civic duty is, and you're showing them that their involvement in their community matters, and that if they step up, we will make room. And so thank you for stepping up, taking the chance, sharing your voice, and coming to us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So why don't we turn over to the administration, superintendent and your staff as well? You can, no, comment if you, I know that you met with, with the students before, so the floor is yours.
And I just want to mimic what everybody else has already said. Thank you so much for, for being here, for speaking for yourselves and for the students, and for staying in touch, again, like Ms. Lambert mentioned, I know that you guys are on, many of you have left now and are on to your, your lives in college, and I know that that must be extremely busy and stressful, and so I appreciate you taking the time out of that to even come back and make sure that this work is done and done right here in Everett. So we have been working on, and you know, multiple different facets on this work, understanding that, you know, it is going, we are looking for long-term change, and that long-term change does take slow, steady, systemic change that's thoughtful. And so policies are certainly part of that, and that is something that we are looking at, and I know that I've spoken about that before, and I'm so glad that we're here to have this conversation tonight about the handbooks, and I'm hoping that more of these kinds of conversations will happen as we take our policies, you know, one by one, because there are very, many of them, these are just kind of the tip of the iceberg, so how are we looking at all of these policies? And then how are we looking at the implementation? So that's part of the work. Another thing that I have heard from the, from the group as well is about, you know, hiring and staffing and making sure that the, that the staff is reflective of the student population, and again, that's going to be a long work in progress, but I do think that we have made strides there, not only in just, you know, recruiting diversity and highly qualified diverse candidates, but also in revamping how we hire. And I think, again, that's, that's a really important part of the process, is making sure that the hiring includes a multitude of people from a multitude of backgrounds who are, who are sitting on that panel to really weigh in on the faculty that is going to be serving us. And, you know, our plan too is to include students on those interview processes moving forward. It has been a little bit challenging right now, because we wanna be very mindful of, you know, bringing students in, especially what we were doing, the hiring at the beginning of the year, but we would like to also, you know, make sure that those items, and so we're slowly sort of phasing in how we would like these processes to work, and I really do feel like we are seeing gains again slowly. We're even, you know, starting to look very analytically at the positions that are sort of outside of the school system, starting with some of the positions that, for example, we share with this, with City Hall. So, you know, many may not know that we actually have positions that are shared half by us and half by, you know, the Everett City Hall, and I know, I'm sure many of you have heard, that this is a larger conversation than just the, the school system, this is about the entire city. And so we're also looking at those positions and making sure we're working collaboratively with City Hall to, to make sure that the hiring practices that we are trying to implement at the school system are also ones that we're going to see, you know, in other parts of the city as well, and especially in those positions that we share with the city. You know, we've been talking a lot about curriculum, I'm not gonna lie, that's been a challenge this year, especially as we're having so many different conversations about curriculum, really trying to adjust our practice as well as the content, because as you all know, the practice looks very different, I think one of you said, you know, just feels really strange, and I think that that's what a lot of our students are experiencing right now. I think that makes it even more important that our curriculum be engaging and culturally responsive and building upon the backgrounds of our students. I think that's a way to make it not feel strange, so I think we're, we're trying to balance our ability and capacity to be able to manage the practice, which manage, with managing the progress that we need to make in the actual content of the curriculum. And so, so that's a challenge that we're working through as well. We're also doing a lot of different training, and I had, I had heard too, very loud and clear that, you know, our, that we need to provide the opportunities for our school leaders, our central office staff, our teachers, to have these kinds of, to have the, the training that they need in order to be mindful, culturally responsive. And so we did, in our professional development at the start of the year, do all-staff training. We've started a partnership with a consulting firm that's been leading a central office and school-based leadership group, and again, building our capacity. I think that, you know, I think Lori, Melissa, I can't, sorry, I can't remember who exactly said this, I think both of you guys were piggybacking off each other about like, what are the statements that we're making about how, who we are in Everett, what we stand for? And I think we've started doing that in things like our anti-racist resolution that we passed at the school committee, but one of the things that we also need to be very mindful of is the fact that everybody's in a very different part of this journey, like it's not just a professional journey, we're asking people to take a personal journey here. And people feel differently and have different levels of comfortability that don't just go into what they are thinking about the students, but are very much reflective of how they feel about themselves, their own upbringing, their own background knowledge and understanding that they bring to the table. And so a lot of those things sort of need to be unpacked and getting us to a place where we feel comfortable, and so I think that's kind of some of the work that we're doing now, is really starting to have these conversations, have people feel comfortable with how they feel about this themselves, so that they can then put it out to the world and make those statements, not just as like a school committee and as an overall district administration, but so that you're seeing it more from, you know, the staff, from, you know, the school leaders, because I feel like a lot of people, when I talk to them, I feel like their intentions are in the right place, but they don't know how is the, what is the appropriate way to express them and when? Like what is the right platform for, what is the way to, to make sure that my statement is coming across in the way that I intend it to be? And so I think that that's some of the other work that we're doing, so we have a couple of partnerships there where we're, we're going through some training, I'm included in that, Ms. Lambert is part of that, you know, like we, so we're, we've included school committee members, school leaders, district leaders, and then we also, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I am very thankful to say, has also heard that this is a need, not just in Everett, but across the state, so they've actually been putting out multiple modules. We had a whole team from the Webster who went, because again, like you said, this starts early on, it cannot just be the work that's done at the high school. So a team at the Webster went that included the principals, and the principal and, and teachers who went to go through anti-racist training, and there were three different modules, and now the second set of three different modules is anti-racist parent engagement. And so I feel like we're trying to tap into every kind of opportunity that we can in order to get these discussions happening, and to really start to build our capacity, you know, as a district, and so I think it's gonna take time, and I do wish, you know, we could all move these things much faster, and again, we're always open to suggestions, if there are things you think that we should be looking at or thinking about, but we really are trying to, you know, take what we have heard and try to, in this environment, in this virtual environment, try to put as much of it into place and into implementation and into policy as we can.
Thank you, Superintendent, anybody else in your team would like to add, comment, principal, vice principal, deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent?
Do I, if it's okay, if I go, Mr. Mateo Barrows, I'd love to be up here.
Please, Mr. Norman.
Thank you so much, I wanna thank the school committee, the superintendent, the team, for everything that they've done to make this happen, the students most especially, because for me, the motto of the academies is our voice and our choice, and that's truly what's happening right now, is you guys getting together, making your voices heard, and it's been tremendous, from the first meeting that we had, through the meetings with the summer, through the meetings with the chief of police, it was great to, you know, see, be able to express how you were feeling and have people listen, so thank you so much. I want you to know, the people that are now first years, Melissa, as you put it, and off at school, there have been lots of changes made. The superintendent's done a wonderful job with all of the PD for the administrators, which has been tremendous, we can't wait to pass it on, we continue to pass it on to our staff, which has been wonderful. I wanna go back to a couple of things, do I know Fabrice was really vocal about some of the things that he wanted to put forward, and I know for him, toxic masculinity was something that he wanted people to be able to talk about, so I wanna mention that for Fabrice. The handbook, I've made, we, I took very copious notes during the time when we talked at our meeting, I've made just about all of those changes to the handbook. I don't know if we're gonna go through that later this evening, but those changes are in there, so I can make sure that your voices are heard, because it's very important to us. And I'm happy that we do have the recruits that are here for this year's juniors, seniors, and the new leaders to continue this work for what the people put forth last year, and have really broken tremendous ground in helping Everett High School transform. So I really do appreciate everything that you've done. Mr. McCarthy has been a wonderful addition, I know you people don't, some of you may or may not know him, but Mr. McCarthy, if you'd like to speak, that would be great.
Hello, everybody, um, this is my first go-around with this. My name is Corey McCarthy, I'm the vice principal at Everett High School. I am glad to be here, and I, I mean, I'm having an outstanding educational experience. I met, you know, with this group, the second day, my second day at work, I met with some of you guys. Remember, we did this really nice video, and we, you know, we really had like a powerful session. And I think, for me, that interaction really framed my approach to how I want to do this work here, and, and this work is embedded in my personal values and principles as a human being, especially when I'm working with young, and young, black and brown, and students of color. So I, it really represents who I am as a person, so I'm extremely proud and honored to be a part and, and have a conversation with this group about how do we stop talking about all the things we're gonna do and just do all the things we want to hap, we want to happen? I think that is, ultimately, we have to recognize that, that we have, we are in a society that everyone wants student voice until the students start voicing it, right? So we want to make sure that the students have a, a place where they could not So we want to make sure that the students have a a place where they could not only be heard, but to be heard by everyone and not sort of be really boxed in and hearing the echoes of the only the things they say, right? The word and the actions they must track, they must travel. And we must also have some direct action items, right? Like, if you really want something to work, if we really want this to work, people have to search within themselves and to do this work with you in mind, with the diversity in mind, with the with the challenges that you have in mind. Like, that has to be at the forefront of people's minds when they're doing anything when it comes to education, right? Like, when you're literally writing a note to yourself, does this, does this offend? Does this support, does uplift, does this target, does this trigger any one of these kids who are, for the most part, marginalized and underserved? And I think the the initiative that and and the movement that you guys have brought forth is is really outstanding. But you know what? I think that for us and at EHS and talking to, you know, Mr. Norman, like, we understand the need for us may take for your vision to be implemented by at a school level by creating a learning community of multiple affinity groups. And so we could start getting, and people have to be uncomfortable with this work before they, before the fixed mindsets are really affected and turn into growth mindsets. It's not a situation, this particular sensitive situation, it's not a situation where folks could pretend to make these changes. Folks have to find it within themselves and embrace, whether if you're not a person of color, you have to embrace allyism, and you have to explore that. And you have to really, really say to yourself, hey, am I, am I perpetuating these situations that lead kids to to jail? That are life and death, these are life and death decision-making that educators do sometime, have sometimes, and that affect black and brown kids differently. Now, what does that mean for the, for the, for white students? That means that they have to understand their role in in culture, in in terms of culturally responsive learning and education. And their role is huge, because people want to know the differences. And we can't, we could, we're, at this point, everybody's only assuming, right? So we're, we're here this year, we're working towards having these groups and and make your program and your initiative a legacy program that is always felt within the school, so it doesn't die when you leave, or die when you graduate. Or you could go and study for a class where, you know, where Lori's doing the work and and she's saying, hey, you know what, I'm gonna, I I got it from here, I know how to recruit for this, I know how to identify who is going to support me, and I know how to challenge a system that is not designed to help our, to to help me succeed if I'm a person of color. So, you know, obviously, it sounds like a lot of work, it's very heavy. And if it's not heavy to you, then you probably, that's anyone, right? That's my personal challenge, anyone. You probably shouldn't be working with black and brown students, right? Because I I believe deep down that for us to collectively make this change, we have to build a a stronger learning community where we are able to constantly assess our own personal values and help students rationalize this very tough world that they live in. I'm sorry to go on for so long, but I really, I just really wanted folks to understand that at Everett High School, we are, we are really pushing to make this, to make this work, not temporarily, for the long term.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Welcome again to EPS and and Everett High. So, Ms. Murray.
So ironically, given all of what Mr. Norman and Mr. McCarthy just said, in looking through the student handbooks, Mr. Norman's revisions are apparent. And having listened to the students and alumni speak today about the fact that they see this work starting at the high school level, which is sort of where I would have come from as well, because I teach high schools, so that's sort of where I see the movement coming from too. Ironically, a lot of the equity issues that Mr. Norman's been trying to address in the high school handbook have not even been touched in the elementary handbook. So that's something that I think we need to think about.
I I believe, just to clarify, that's our next agenda item.
Correct. Well, anybody else before we move to our second item? And just want to thank our students again, so they can go on with their lives. But I, I just want to say that, one, how important this work is personally for me, but for all of us in the Everett Public Schools and the school committee, the creation of this SOB committee, this new SOB committee, is actually the result of your voice, your efforts, and for challenging us, because that's what we need to challenge. We need, we, we, as as a school committee and, you know, and administrators, we need to be challenged to, like, you are, you're not doing the job that you're supposed to do. But we also need to be aware when we are not doing, so we can improve it. I believe many of your voices, many of the the recommendations that you brought, as the superintendent mentioned, she and her team are starting to implement. The school committee will actually be debate, well, our SOB committee will be debating tonight, right after for our, on our next item, which is the handbooks. And as Mr. Norman mentioned, many of those changes that we have proposed are there. This item, this agenda item was brought by Ms. Lambert. I'm sure she'll have other proposals, other changes that we will review tonight and make a recommendation for our full body for our next meeting. So that's the result of your work, your students who are here. And and those who are not able to join, because I just want the folks to know at home, those who are watching us, that that this group is, it's way bigger, right? We have other members, so you guys are representing a bigger group that met with with Mr. Norman, met with the superintendent, with other members of EPS, and even with the chief of police, to discuss some of your concerns as well. So, Ms. Lambert, I'll turn over to you, so you can, if you have anything to add. Otherwise, we can thank our students for the last time.
Oh, thank you, and I look forward to continuing the work and hearing from you. Even our first years that have moved on, I hope you stay in touch. And I so appreciate your time tonight and your, your labor up to this point and going forward. We'll, we'll carry it together.
Thank you, folks. Thank you again, and keep strong. We need you. Take care.
Much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to the next item, which so I'll turn that back to Ms. Lambert, the review of EPS Elementary and High School Student Handbooks. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, and please, pardon me, I just, this is my method. I had a few questions that perhaps Mr. Norman or Mr. McCarthy can answer. My first question, so page nineteen of the high school handbook, just to start there, because it was, I had far less questions on the high school handbook. So there's a reference on page nineteen to tier interventions. And I just wanted to ask, is that referencing the disciplinary kind of hierarchy in, on page sixty-one?
Ms. Lambert, just for clarification, I'm sorry, are you talking about the handbook twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one, Everett High School.
Everett High School, and what page?
So on page nineteen. References that consequences will be in alignment with tier interventions by the dean. So that was the first time I I saw that word, and it's not consistent throughout. So I just wanted to see if it was just discussing the disciplinary options listed on page sixty-one. Is that what it is, or is it something different?
It doesn't necessarily reference the disciplinary options. Tiered interventions means not just jumping into a suspension, right? So talking about what other alternatives there are before we get to that point. So that's what we talked about, tiered interventions, and not just jumping to whatever the consequence may be that's listed in the handbook.
That's excellent, and I was hoping that was it. I just, I wasn't sure if it was referenced, because it was kind of, where discipline was mentioned, but it wasn't kind of explicit on what it meant. So I don't know if that's something we could expand on in the handbook, or just reference the, I know we, it is referenced mediation, restored. And it brings me to another piece. So as for the disciplinary, and again, my apologies, in the disciplinary policies, which start on page sixty-one, listed is multiple references to substance abuse and the disciplinary consequences, but is there a referral process? I know we partner with so many community organizations and have a great relationship with CHA and Elliott. You know, so, yes, there's a disciplinary consequence, but what is the intervention well for the student?
Sure. So if you're talking about substance use and abuse in that policy, whenever something of that nature is suspected, everything runs through the school nurse and through guidance first. So there is no just jumping to any conclusions. In the handbook, I believe it says the school nurse will be involved, then with a guidance counselor. Then we do have ways of helping students through issues, so that, I don't know if that's listed in the handbook, but the policy of bringing the student to the nurse and working with guidance first is how we work with those issues.
I think it's more just that it's disjointed. So when you get to the suspension and grounds for suspension, it's kind of listed on its own. So it almost seems like that's the kind of the automatic consequence. So maybe that's where I had confusion, but thank you for pointing that out. On page thirty-one, the before and after-school policy explicitly states that students will be subject to disciplinary action, arrest if necessary. And I was just curious, because that kind of seemed extreme.
Yeah, can you, can you say that again? You broke up a little bit.
Sorry. On page thirty-one, there's the before and after-school policy. And the last line says, "Students who loiter within sight of the high school pass onto private property will be subject to disciplinary action or arrest if necessary." So it just seemed.
Yeah, I I I hear what you're saying. It's just the before or after-school policy. So the handbook is used, so if we have to enforce something, like, for example, if there's a game late at night, or there's things going on and people are refusing to leave, I think that's what that's referring to. I don't think it's referring to if you're just hanging out, you're going to be disciplined, but before and after school. And I don't know about the before-school pieces much, but the after-school piece that was talking about the discipline, I think that was put in for games and after-school activities, just so we didn't have people hanging around that weren't supposed to be there.
So you feel it's important to have a rest?
No, I don't feel, so, a lot of the language that has been put into the handbook has been put in by a lawyer, not by necessarily me. I didn't make up the language for the handbook. The stuff that's been in the handbook, I'll agree. Some of it has been there for a long time, and we've had updated some pieces here and there. And usually that goes through, a lawyer will look at the policy and recommend A, B, C, or D, which I know that's how it changed this year, with some stuff that Mr. Bobrinsky recommended with thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half. That stuff is in there because of issues that have happened in the past.
Okay. I mean, I I would say maybe could, I don't know if we can go back and ask if referral to law enforcement, I I mean, I don't, I don't know. It just seems.
I would, I think I would prefer, we can, I mean, any proposed changes, we will, of course, put through and make sure the attorneys are fine with it. But I do agree that you could just say disciplinary action, disciplinary or law enfor, enforce, enforcement or something, yeah, that we could.
Just appropriate disciplinary action.
Right.
I mean, you just make it global enough. Mike?
Just so some of the changes that went through, the changes that I proposed, and I am actually glad that you brought those up, Ms. Lambert, because the kids didn't see those, and we didn't read those that way. So it's good to have a different perspective on how people are reading those pieces. I would hope at some point, too, we can talk about what the kids wanted to put in and what they saw as some issues, right? Because that's where I I made my notes for tonight. But some of that other stuff I have written down, page nineteen, page thirty-one, and I'm going to go back and look at, and then I can propose changes that we can submit to the school committee and to the lawyers, so we can make sure that everything is okay.
No, and absolutely. So, and I apologize, I'll yield to Ms. Murray. I just wanted to, as I was reading it, it, I had the lens from the students, but also as a parent, reading this, and this is kind of my guidebook or reference to the school system. And for me, some of it felt like, oh.
Yes, so it's interesting that you say that, because what the students had said was it felt it was more like a punishment piece than a handbook. So that was their arguments and some of the language that they wanted to change, because it always seemed like it was this coming down on the student, not necessarily helping the student. So that's why they've suggested some of those changes, and by all means, we're enough to put some of the changes. So, because if you are reading that that way, some of, someone else could read it that way. We don't want it misunderstood.
And then my last piece was just about the dress code. So I know we had a lot, we talked a lot about this, and I was glad to see changes. And I spent a lot of time over the summer and over the fall, reading about inclusive dress code policy. And so I was surprised that some things stayed in, like, still can't show your shoulders, you know? So wanted to talk to you, but if you want to comment on, I know some of the changes you did make.
Yeah, so some of the changes that were made were dress code items that students felt weren't appropriate, maybe antiquated, that didn't think were fair. So we took what they said into consideration, and that's what we offered in changes to the handbook, to the school committee. We colored it, I believe, in green and yellow, so everyone could see that it was different from the previous year. On specifically on dress code, one, two, three, four, five, six, there are at least six changes that we made that we wanted, because students didn't feel, you know, they had lots of different feelings about the way that those were written. So I put them in there for proposal to be changed. There probably are other ones that if you read through, we could probably look together as a group, and if everyone thought that that would be appropriate to change, I'm all for it. I want to make this a handbook that's accessible for everyone, that is fair to everyone, but still reflects the rules that we need to follow to work within the school guidelines and work with Desi and work with the state.
So I, I had found one, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but I can share the screen for the Seattle School District. They, they have a really inclusive policy that does keep, you know, appropriate dress, but also allows for self-expression as well as doesn't refer to, you know, and and I think you did a good job of taking out some of the kind of stereotypical language that was in the existing policy. Kudos on that. But I think just the the feeling, and we heard it especially from young women and women of color, that they felt penalized by certain policies in the dress code, you know, whether it be body type. So I I can bring that up unless, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to.
Well, I just, before I turn over, and I think the superintendent might have something to add, and Ms. Murray also want to speak. I just want to make sure that tonight we make recommendations for change, particular items, the recommendation for change, so we can recommend this for our next full, full body, full school committee meeting on November second. So we don't keep delaying until mid-November, early-December, but we do not need to finalize language now, but if we can make recommendations, you know, regarding the dress code. you know, regarding the dress code. Recommendation on, you know, the removal of the word arrest and work throughout these next two weeks on language that would be appropriate to be there would be terrific. So we can make recommendations on those changes now, work throughout these next two weeks and refer the matter for approval by the full board. Sounds good?
Yeah, that was my goal.
All right, perfect. Ms. Murray?
Um, okay, so Mr. Norman, I did what Ms. Lambert did and I kind of pushed my way through this as best as I could around parenting and work and all the other things that happen in a person's life, especially in the world of COVID. And I will say that if I had seen this document in isolation, I probably still would have felt like it read too much like a punitive document about rules and regulations rather than a guiding handbook for entering students. But looking at it through the lens of what the elementary one looks like, I've got to say that this, your work listening to the students is wholly and completely recognized to me. Like it is not, it does not go beyond my recognition that you clearly heard the voices of these kids and also that you tried to update this so that it is not a document from 1962. I would say that is not, I mean, there's literally stuff in the elementary handbook that I'm like, did this just reference like a video cassette recorder? I mean, what? So I will say that, but even given that, I think we have a ways to go. And to that end, if we go back to page 31, where we were talking about with Ms. Lambert, the dress code. In addition to the fact that I do agree with Ms. Lambert, that it seems particularly heavy in the regulating of female bodies in general. There is an additional piece of, for lack of a better word, legislation of adolescent bodies that I'm not sure I have ever as an educator understood the purpose of. And when I saw it here, I was surprised, which is the continued choice to outlaw head wraps wider than three inches. And as Everett becomes more and more diverse and we have more and more male students of color who, all adolescents are vain, this is not a reflection of any one group. But if you're feeling vain and you're not pleased with your hair, I would rather you were in my English class with a head wrap on that's neutral in color and not disrupting me. I mean, of course, I don't want it to say Latin Kings on it or something like that. But if you have a black head wrap on, I don't care and frankly, I'm not even going to notice. So the fact that there was this allowance of a three inch headband, but not a head wrap seemed particularly picky un. Do you see?
Yeah, so I have, actually, the following items are allowed under head coverings and accommodation students sincerely held religious beliefs. And that's also where that three and a half inches was to manage here. So it's kind of in the same spot. The student's recommendation was to leave the head wraps for religious covering, keep it in there, head wraps for religious coverings, but remove headbands and wraps no wider than three and a half inches because they have the same feelings that you had. So that's the suggested delete that's in there.
Okay, good.
We have that there.
All right. My next issue is in the student searches on page 58. Now, anybody who works in education knows that student rights and adult rights in terms of search are different. In terms of searching lockers because they're public, they belong to the school, not the kid. Like there's certain ways in which searches are more liberal with teenagers and kids than they are with adults. But even given that, when you say that the reason for searches can be if a student has violated or is violating either rules of school or law, clear the, clearly the law one makes sense to me within reason. But violating school rules as a reason for searches, how are you training staff around what's an appropriate searchable offense versus just being an annoying teenager?
Right, so there are no, we don't have staff just going around conducting searches of students. That does not happen. The language that's in there is in there for both to protect the student and to protect the school as well about searches. So there's not just, not pulling kids in and searching, it depends what happens from what, you know, may be suspected of a student. You know, it's from anywhere from what's in their bag or anything like that, but the students, all of their rights are protected. And I make sure that happens. It gets to a level where it, you know, can be very challenging. The people in the building are protecting the student at all times. You can be assured of that. I wouldn't want anything to happen to anyone's child in my building that they felt was unjust or not right. So the rules are in to protect the students, all of the students in the building. And there are no searches going on of any students, like of an adult just saying, hey, what's this, what's that? That doesn't happen.
Okay, and do you have, I mean, not off the cuff, I realize that this is an ask. But do you have a way of sharing with us anything around demographics around searches? Males versus females, students of color versus white students, upperclassmen versus lowerclassmen? Anything like that that we can look at to make sure that these search rules are being upheld in an equitable and even manner?
Yes, we keep track of all the information when students get disciplined. So we have information that can show us that. But I can honestly tell you, I cannot even remember the last time a student's search was conducted because we were suspicious of something. So that, it doesn't happen that often. But when it does, again, the rules are there to protect everyone involved, both the school and the student.
Right, and I, and I certainly don't, I hope you don't see this as my casting aspersions at you. It's just more clarifying for the sake of, if we're going to put a document out to families. My first question would be, well, what school rule can you search my kid for? Like if my kid walks out of the cafeteria with an apple, you can search his bag?
No.
I don't know about that.
That's, that's not happening.
Right, so when we use vague language, that's why we want to make sure we're following up and making sure that we can prove definitively that's not happening.
And if we want to change any of the language for student searches, I have no problem doing that. We can discuss that and run that through legal and make sure that everyone feels safe and protected. I don't want anyone to feel like that the rules, you know, are putting, you know, anyone in the wrong spot.
My last question is about suspension, expulsion, and removal from class. So it's my understanding that whenever a child is put out of class now for over a certain number of minutes, it counts as essentially a suspension. And that DESI has within the last two and a half years pretty seriously put the kibosh on teachers putting kids in the hallway who are disruptive, administrators putting students out of the building, et cetera, et cetera. But the language in the student handbook around the suspension and expulsion procedures still feels like it's reading pre-two years ago. Did you guys update that to, to reflect DESI's expectations?
Yes, I believe that's part of the submission that was put before the school committee. Mr. Obramski had just, I guess, had a conversation with some lawyers about that language and they caught, that's the, one of the things that gets constantly updated because we have 37H, 37H and a half, 37H and three quarters. That has been constantly updated over the past couple of years because of suspension rules to work with the state and to make sure we're not just suspending people. 10 years ago, totally different, 100%. Not anymore. Suspendations do not happen like that. So fortunately, we have a good crew of people that are working together to try to make sure we're going through everything we need to go through and students are not just being suspended like they would have been 10 years ago.
Well, I'd like to thank you for being so transparent. And I'd also like to say that if those young students were reflective of the work that you're doing at the high school, then bravo to you because they're pretty impressive young people. And that I think we're well on our way to this reading more like a restorative justice handbook than like, you know, slap on the wrist dues and don'ts book. And, you know, I think if we do this collaboratively and in the spirit of moving forward in our vision, I think we're well on our way. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Barris, can you comment to Ms. Murray?
Yes.
So Ms. Murray, just so you understand, in the high school handbook particularly, and it's also in the elementary, but on different pages, the way the book lines up. If you're looking at what you were just talking about on, from page 2 to the top of page 71.
Yep.
Changes that are made on those pages that Mr. Norman highlighted in red and yellow.
Yep.
Those were recommended by Paige Tobin, who's an attorney with Murphy Lambert Murphy. She went through this section of the handbook based on a case we had last year to review those pages, those recommendations on those pages came from attorney Paige Tobin from Murphy Lambert Murphy.
Mr. Obramski, would you mind letting me know how your department at the central office level looked at those pages in regards to the demands and changes, not just legally, but from DESI that were being demanded of us as a school system?
Yes, I believe three, approximately three years ago, when you're talking about when that law changed, Ms. Murray, Paige Tobin also did go through and update this book for us based on those laws. So I did.
She's an expert in educational law?
She's an, I would consider her, based on my knowledge, an expert in educational law. She handles a lot, she handles a lot of our special education cases for us in the other public schools. If we have potential BSAA hearings or some complaints, Mr. Donahue will contact her. I would consider her an expert, to be honest with you, Ms. Murray.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Obramski?
No, thank you, Mr. Barris.
I guess Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, I, so I just wanted to call it back up because my only other piece for the high school was the dress code and I can either read the language. And the only reason I brought up this other policy, Mr. Chair, is because instead of reinventing the wheel, I thought it did a really good job of addressing what we need while also keeping in mind, you know, unintended consequences for students. So I don't know if you want me to read it or I share it and just as a proposal to take some of that language.
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you. See if I can figure out how to do this. Okay. So again, this is, it's a universal student dress code policy from Seattle Public Schools. There are several out there, but this one I felt addressed much of what we spoke to. And it keeps it very simple in that students should be able to dress and style their hair for school in a manner that expresses their individual, individuality without fear or unnecessary discipline. That students have the right to be treated equitably. Dress code enforcement will not create disparities, reinforce or increase marginalization of any group, nor will it be more strictly enforced against students because of racial identity, ethnic, gender identity, gender expression, gender conformity, sexual orientation, cultural or religious identity, household income, body size, body maturity. But again, it, it brings back students and staff are responsible for managing their own personal distractions. And students should not face unnecessary barriers to school attendance. And so it very simply states that students must wear at top, bottom, and footwear. And then addresses what students may not which I think covers much of what we're intending with our own dress code policy that any pornographic, threatening, promoting illegal or violent, et cetera, demonstrating hate group association, affiliation, or use of hate speech targeting groups or protected groups, intentionally showing private parts, clothing must cover in an opaque material, cannot cover the student's face to the extent that the student's not identifiable and not demonstrate gang association or affiliation. So I thought it was simple language that does what we need while also remaining inclusive. So I just wanted to, as the subcommittee, see what your thoughts were on adopting maybe some of this in our own dress code policy.
Ms. Norman, any?
Yeah. I think that's great. I like the, the beginning of the documents. A lot of the things that are actually in there are in our dress code. So there are some things that are very similar. When it talks to the different types of clothing and what can be printed on clothing. So a lot of that is the same. But I do like the way that this is written because it is a little more inclusive. Ours was a little bit antiquated, which is why we're having this discussion to update it. But I do like some of the language that's in that one, that if we wanted to adopt some of that. Because I like that it, you know, it has core values and it says it that way instead of saying, no, 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 no. It's kind of putting it in a different way and that's a lot of what the students had said, that they wanted to be expressed on the handbook.
Superintendent?
Yes, I, I would agree and I, I think, you know, this is definitely, I think the first step was getting the students feedback and that's a great place to start. But I do think that this is going to have to be a, like, we'll finalize it for now, but this is going to have to be a long-term project. Because I think this is a perfect example of where we need to look at, like, the wording that other districts even use. We don't need to reinvent the wheel and be able to use something like this. Because I do like, just like Mr. Norman said, that this is also aspirational. It, it gives like, like he said, the core value of what dress, like, here's what we're trying to strive for with student dress and this is how we achieve it, right? So it actually has a thinking behind, this is why we want it to look like this versus just don't wear this and don't wear this and, and wear this. And actually talking through and like even a portion where we were talking about, I think, did it say it in here also about, you know, we are a pathway and vocational school about dress being professional and like being an exercise in, in, in the work environment. So I think really articulating the reason behind these policies. And then the policies is really important. And so I do think that this, you know, we can definitely, like you said, I don't want to belabor like getting something approved. But I really do think this is a great example of how we kind of need to take every single piece of the policy and see if we can kind of just like progress and really make this like those students said, an example of the kind of policies and the, of the kind of reflection of what we want our school system to be. And it's about teaching our students about, you know, like this future world and preparing them for, for what they're going to handle moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murray?
So to piggyback on what the superintendent said, I'm in full agreement that this is a big to-do. I mean, there's a lot of work here that needs to be done and not just obviously on the high school handbook, but on the elementary school handbook as well. And I don't know that it's appropriate as a school committee for us to be wordsmithing the handbook. I don't think that's our job. I think what Ms. Lambert did was she brought forward something that shows us what language looks like when you make that lens switch. When you're no longer looking at something through a punitive lens, but looking at it through a growth lens. And if we can use that as a jumping off point. And, you know, in my mind, I would love to see buildings have discussions with their students and staff about this. And then building leaders come back and sit down together and sort of work through this so that these books are truly reflective of the way in which we love our community and we love our students and we support our community and we support our students. And the reasons why these handbooks exist is to help them on the path to success and not to punish them when they get in our way or when they cause us undue stress or. Or when they cause us undue stress or steal an apple from the cafeteria, whatever the situation is. So I'm not in the job of telling educators what this handbook should look like as much as I am with, I believe, Ms. Lambert and Mr. Marconi, Mr. Barrows, with saying, hey, look at what lens change looks like. Let's move forward and try to move our, our, all of our documentation, not just our, our, our student handbooks, but all of our documentation. If we come at it from a position of believing that we set the bar high and the students will rise to the occasion, rather than saying, this is the low bar, don't go below it. I think we'll get more bang for our buck, and I also think it's a better message to be sending our kids.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Lambert, so would you like to make a recommendation?
So if I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, amend that we accept the changes as made on the dress code, and I'm just referencing the dress code, but would you recommend that we, at some point, have a working group towards bigger change? I just want to make sure I'm, because again, so we approved the policy, but labor on the policy, so I, I want to make sure that it's reasonable, um, what we're asking.
I, Superintendent?
So I'm wondering, I, I don't know if this is the right way to go about it, but I'm wondering if, like, for this policy that we've already got, so let's, let's use the dress code as an example. If we take the rest of the changes that have been made and we, you know, I think we've gotten to an okay place. It's not exactly where we eventually want to be, but it's, it's progress. But then we actually focus on it piece by piece, and maybe start with this, the dress code policy, and kind of try and use the one that you showed us, the one that we have, merge them with some of our own core values, and at least have that be the new policy. And then we take the next policy and kind of go from there, that I feel like if we took it, we did it like that, that we, we could move forward faster versus trying to wait for the entire thing. So if we went by, with the changes that are here now, came to you with the proposed for the full school committee after we worked with the school leaders of what we think is less code policy. Here's the before, here's the model we used, here's the after with the Everett kind of spin. Have that approved as part of this handbook, and then kind of go from there and do pieces of it, so that we have a fully approved one, but then we take, okay, here's the next piece we want to look at, and it's suspensions. Here's the next piece we want to look at, um, and, and take it like that.
Mr. Chair, and please correct me if this motion is incorrect. I would like to make a motion to refer to the administration to adopt the changes and amendments recommended and discussed, um, for proposal to the body as a whole.
Yep.
Meeting on enough time, or on our November 2nd school committee meeting?
And as the superintendent mentioned, this would be a work in progress, because this, one thing to, you know, remember, to remind all of us is that every year, we have to approve these books, right? So next year is going to come back to us, and we will need to make changes as well, uh, and adapt to how, you know, change, seeing particular areas, how those should be. So I, in my view, we are starting this now, which, which is terrific. So is that a second to Ms. Lambert's motion? Ms. Murray, on you.
I second.
Right? So Ms. Lambert, uh, Ms. Lambert, you're going to have to repeat, because I did not take a note of your motion.
I make a motion to, uh, refer to the administration, the changes and amendments discussed for a presentation at our second school committee of the full body.
There you go. So motion made and second, uh, Ari, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Three, the affirmative, the motion has passed as a recommendation to the full body. So should we move on to elementary handbook? Ms. Lambert, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so the, the first thing, and starting on page nine, uh, we reference the contact information. Again, I, I don't mean to get into the weeds, but just, this is one of the, um, first introductions to our parents. So we, we reference ways to update the contact information. And then it continues on to page 12, uh, with the emergency cards, and it actually references the physical emergency cards. Should we update that with the website and how, since we do have an updating contact information? In the spirit of it actually being a handbook?
I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert, I'm trying to identify where you are proposing the change, at page 11?
Yeah, so it's, um, page, sorry. So on, it's on page nine, and then on 12. So actually, that would probably be the best place. So page 12, it talks about emergency card, student records. There's a few places where it references the necessity to update contact information, but it doesn't specify how. So I don't know if maybe adding the family liaisons or the website, or just referencing, just so that it's functional as far as a parent referencing that.
Superintendent?
Yeah, I actually think that some of this we've also done away with, so we need to just update it. Because the emergency cards, I think we're doing differently. Well, obviously, this year, we're doing them differently. But I, I, I believe our plan moving forward is to do it differently. So I think that's what we need to kind of nail down, is what are the changes that we've made this year in a virtual world that we think kind of should, should stick around moving forward. So I do think we need to update, not even just the how, but also the what, actually.
Great. Uh, yeah, because I, I think just the addition of the family liaison and letting families know that we have methods, um, of communicating in their preferred language. It eliminates a barrier immediately. So, you know.
Sorry, Ms. Lambert, uh, on that same note, I believe Ms. Murray has a comment on it?
I do. Um, I think my comment is, is, is bigger than that, but it encompasses that. In all the ways that Mr. Norman has at least attempted to update the high school book, remove it from a punitive, um, disciplinary handbook toward a restorative justice book that is encompassing student voice and the entire Everett community. The elementary handbook looks like it has not been touched since 1986. And I, if I'm going to be honest, like, if this came across us for a vote, I could not vote for this as it stands now. I think there are so many problems in here and so many things that need to be redone that, um, in a way, I think, like, the starting point would be for Mr. Norman to speak to the other school leaders about how he began this work and where he sees it going, and then have them begin this work as well. Luckily, right now, with most of our kids remote, the need for a student handbook is less pressing than it has been in previous years. But like, really, in kindergarten, we're worried about kids showing their shoulders? I mean, like, we're talking about suspending second graders under certain, I mean, like, some of the stuff in here is, is really troubling to me as a mother. And, um, and I just don't know that it's something we can solve tonight at this meeting. I think it really is something, I mean, when you, when you listen to Mr. Norman talk about the work that he's begun, and the amount of effort and time that he's put into it, I think that's what we're looking at for the elementary handbook as well. I really do. So, I mean, nitpicking it apart, we're going to be here until 11:30 at night. There are so many issues in this book. So many issues.
Well, before, thank you, Ms. Murray, uh, before I turn over to Ms. Lambert, I just, I, I just want to echo the superintendent. It is a work in progress. I don't think we're going to be able to fix everything that we want to fix, the elementary, uh, book. Not tonight, not this, not this year. I, I, I believe as a subcommittee, we should provide some recommendations for some initial change, but then have this as a work in progress to make additional change, instead of waiting to only approve the book when we have all the change that we want to.
I agree with that, but what I don't agree with is that this is a work in progress. When I look at this through an adult educator, mother lens, this has not been a work in progress. No one has been working on this handbook. And if someone has been working on this handbook, it has been under duress because of legal fear. And other than that, this thing has not been touched. So I feel like it is incumbent on the three of us as school committee members, and then the members of educational leadership sitting in this meeting, to make sure this is truly going to be a work in progress, and that it's going to be reflective of our values and our belief systems, and that we're going to actually make it a genuine effort to move this, this particular piece forward.
I fully agree with you, Ms. Ms. Murray. You've been this school committee for less than a year. I've been this school committee for two and a half years. Ms. Lambert has been this school committee for less than a year. And we have a superintendent and a leadership team who has been placed for the past seven months. So, uh, that's why I believe that we're all new, and, uh, it's, it is a work in progress. Because it has started since the day that Mr. Hiliyan was hired, and that's what I mean by a work in progress. And I believe we're going to be able to change it, uh, for better, which we have, we have improved, uh, already on many, on many fronts. Uh, Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the other piece on page 25 was, so the enforcement of attendance policy, and it, it does reference, it says, every public employee is a supervisor of attendance. The supervisor has the lawful power to apprehend and take to school any minor child who is truant, and to investigate all cases where a child in the public schools fails to attend, which is not exactly true to the law. MGL chapter 76, section 20 says they are within, they have, um, the lawful power to apprehend school without warrant any absentee or truant student wandering in the street or a public place, which is a very different thing and reads very differently, um, than saying somebody can apprehend your child if they don't go to school. And to me, the attendance policy, especially in light of COVID, I think is very important to very clear and have, um, actual language on what can and can't be done. So that would be my recommendation. I, I, I did have the attendance policy about the five days, and in light of COVID, I'm, I'm not sure. You know, this is, our, our subcommittee is on equity, inclusion, and diversity, but I think that fear of punishment or, um, fear of fear is such a prevalent piece of this handbook, and I think that's part of what Ms. Murray was referring to. And then just the final piece, my recommendation is that we make it a universal dress code policy. So I, so much work has been done. The students that spoke to us, that joined us earlier this evening, were very clear that some of their concerns started as early as second grade, third grade. So I want to be cognizant of that, and the work that was already done, I, again, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. My recommendation would be that we make it a universal dress policy from K through 12. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
So, um, piggybacking on what Ms. Lambert was talking about in terms of the attendance policy, if we're really going to dig into the speed and need of this, and think about where, where a starting point might be for this particular book, there are lots of issues here, and Ms. Lambert pointed out the most, um, legally questionable one. But in addition to that, on page 21, it says that, um, school absences aren't waived with a parent note. There must be a doctor's note. And in a working class city, asking parents to pay a co-pay to bring their child to a doctor, which would probably require them to take time off of work, and then get a doctor's note for a stomach bug or a flu, any mother will tell you that's a ridiculous ask for a, of a parent in this day and age. I remember looking at that same rule in handbooks when I was 25 years old and just starting as a teacher. And the fact that this still exists in handbooks today is astounding to me, given where healthcare has gone, particularly around the fact that many of our residents don't actually have healthcare. And in those cases, they're going to be going to the emergency room, or they're going to, they don't have primary care doctors, and they're going to be going to the emergency room and paying out. I mean, I have excellent healthcare, excellent healthcare. My co-pays are $25, and if I go to the emergency room, it's $100. So I'm asking parents to spend from $25 to $100 to waive an absence, because I don't trust that a parent can look at a child that they have raised since birth and say, you're too ill to go to school. That seems insane to me. In addition, um, I understand the five consecutive absences rule. That makes sense to me. Yes, you should have to go to the doctor. If you've been out five days, there's probably something wrong. And I like that our book says that if the doctor's note isn't provided, that, um, you can go to the school nurse and be checked out that way. I think that's an excellent and thoughtful accommodation made to a working-class city. But I am disturbed that if a child has strep throat, for example, which is a multiple-day absence, that child's parent then, after taking off days to be home with their child, then has to take a day off from work, because that student must be accompanied by a parent to come back to school, even if they have a doctor's note. Why would that be? If a doctor writes a note saying this child had strep throat and was out five days, and the child comes back on a Monday, why on earth does that parent have to take that Monday off and bring the kid to school? What is that accomplishing? And I guess that's what I mean by changing the lens, is looking at some of this stuff and asking ourselves, what are we asking of our community? To what end? What are we getting out of it? And, you know, do we need all of this red tape, or is it just in the way of success? There's language in here around suspensions, in which it sounds like you can suspend a child in elementary school without their parent present? I mean, are you kidding me? You suspend my kid without me present? You better expect a phone call from my lawyer. I mean, that's nuts. So, I mean, like, there's just some stuff in here that's problematic on attendance, on discipline. But I do agree with Ms. Lambert that the attendance policy definitely, in that we're living through a pandemic, we live in a red city, a red zone city, and a lot of people are ill and have inadequate healthcare at best. I think we need to be a little bit more forgiving and a little bit more welcoming, and to figure out how to make that more inclusive and less restrictive.
Ms. Trall?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Murray, I just want to comment that as the principal of the Lafayette School for 10 years, I am guilty of violating the attendance policy for probably the last 10 years. Because although I, I agree with you 100% that that policy needs to be updated, and my argument always was, why are we letting doctors tell us what we have to do in schools and forcing people to do exactly what you just said and make a co-payment? So I, uh, I am going to profess my guilt right now for violating the handbook for the last 10 years. Sorry.
Well, let me just say right now that I think that's true in schools universally, and I think if we're going to put out a document that we're saying our school And I think if we're going to put out a document that we're saying our school departments are going to follow. Then they should be enforceable. Why do you make rules you can't enforce?
100%. I agree with you 100%. That attendance policy definitely needs to be cleaned up and as, as do a lot of things in the handbook. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Lambert or Ms. Maury, do we have a motion on the table that you'd like to propose?
And I, I think similar to the Everett High School handbook, I'd like to make a motion and that the administration look at some of the specific changes and potentially some policies to present to the body as a whole on November 2nd. And as a personal note, keeping in mind that this is a work in progress. And to continually, instead of just adding to the handbook, we actually have to change the handbook.
And, and should we say prioritize the attendance policy issues, especially in light of COVID?
Yes, I, I would absolutely agree that in light of 2021 school year, that that should be a priority.
Can I add the other priority I believe should also be the student discipline around suspension of students who are in elementary school level? There's a lot of data out there about the fact that when you start the prison pipeline in schools at young grades. It can become almost impossible for those kids to catch up. And while we're living through a pandemic and that is absolutely a reason to look at attendance. We're also living through some very racially charged times right now. And it's a reason to look at the discipline procedures that we're subjecting our youngest children to. And I know firsthand that parents have reached out to me and said that their third grader, their second grader, their kindergartner have been suspended and that's horrifying to me. I don't know what on earth a kindergartner does to get suspended. If it doesn't make the newspaper, seriously.
And my motion, because I do think as we look at going back to school. Students have been out of school for a very long time and from a social and emotional perspective. It doesn't always present as what you would expect. It sometimes presents as a behavioral issue on the surface. So I do think it is important and will amend my motion to look at the system before K through eight.
I second the motion then.
Okay, motion made. I hope Ari was able to take the correct notes of those two.
I, I think I got this, I think we replayed the second one, but I usually replay them, so we're good.
All right. Well, thank you. Motion made and second, Ari, roll call, please.
Mr. Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
All right, three, in the affirmative, the motion has passed and this will be a work that the administration will do. And if the administration need, just reach out to Ms. Lambert and Ms. Maury and to myself. And we hopefully have a full, a final recommendation or an initial recommendation for initial change. I should say, to the full body, to the full board by the next meeting of this school committee. So we can approve this initial change, knowing that this is a work in progress and this needs to be updated to to the 21st century, if I should say. Well, on that note, Ms. Maury.
Sorry, I just wanted to say one more time how brave it was of Mr. Norman to attempt to hear his students and reflect some changes and actually get his hands dirty. And then to come before a bunch of moms and aggressive people who are looking out for kids and say, this is the work that I've started. I know there's more work to be done. He was very open minded. He was very willing to listen. He was not defensive at all. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that in school leadership. And recognize it for what it was. So thank you, Mr. Norman.
Well, thank you, Ms. Norman. And well, thank everyone, Superintendent, Mr. McCarthy, who left the building, but now is back. See, that's, that's what it means to be, to wear the EPS hat. It's, I think you, you were in the building and then you left and then you go home and then you are back in, correct?
Oh, I'm in Panera Bread right now.
Oh, there you go. See? That it shows even more commitment to the Everett Public Schools and Everett High School. Mr. Norman.
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much. I realize that the change is difficult. But I really appreciate everyone looking at from a different lens and offering different perspectives. So we can truly make effective change to help our students feel better, our staff, our teachers, so everyone feels safe. So I really, I am honored to be here. Thank you so much. And we appreciate all the work that the school committees, school administration is doing to make things better for our students. So thank you.
Right. I second those thoughts. I, I believe that we are all a work in progress. I believe that ultimately we are all learners. And, and we all have to have a strong commitment to learning, right? And if we continue to do that and constantly, you know, really redefine what our purpose is and how that applies to how students learn. I think things like the handbook will become easier conversations to have. They'll, will be, we won't be, won't have to discuss the handbook as much. We would actually have, will have to discuss how, around more improvement in terms of, and how to do things better. And, you know, I think that we, we have opened the door by having, I appreciate the feedback that folks gave tonight. I didn't really comment on it because, you know, I, I've never really immersed myself in the handbook as of yet, but now I am. So I, I believe that by working with Mr. Norman and him having another set of eyes and ears. And I think it will be, it'll be, it'll be helpful for us as we move forward. And to make it, make it aligned district wide. I, I heard someone bring up the prison pipeline and any suspension anywhere at a young age is difficult. Because that's the behavior they gravitate to and they turn it into a, into a power dynamic that they can control. So like, I think there's a lot, a lot more depth to, to that on the, on the elementary and middle school level. So I'm, I'm here for the work and let's go.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I just want to thank the administration. Mr. Bresky, Mrs. Shaw, the superintendent, also Deputy Superintendent Tsai, Ari and my colleagues who together, I believe was a very successful first ever meeting of the Subcommittee on Equity, Inclusion and Diversity. And I especially want to end this meeting by thanking those students. Because this discussion that we had tonight and this change that we proposed on the handbooks were possible because they spoke up. And, and, and we, and we heard and we continue to hear and work with them. So thank everyone, or those who are watching us through Facebook right now. And hope everyone continue to be safe, wear a mask. And we need to get out of the red zone immediately. So stay safe and thank you so much, everyone. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion made and second, Ari, please.
Mr. Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes, with many thanks.
Ms. Murray.
Yes, with a special thanks to Ms. Lambert and Mr. Barros. Because I'm, I feel so welcome to be part of this work with you and it's such important work. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you again and have a great night. Take care. The meeting is adjourned.